Okay. Roll call. Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Boston? Mr. Zachalita?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And Ms. Compton?
Yes.
All members are present. Okay, we'll have invocation, pledge.
Mr. Z.
Captain. Heavenly Father, thank you for our opportunity to meet tonight under not the best of conditions, but a beautiful day outside. We're thankful for today, Lord. Help us to make good decisions on this board tonight and every night that we meet for the benefit of our kids and our employees, Lord. Continue to watch over our state, our county, our region, and our nation, Lord, as we work our way through this difficult situation in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Need a motion to approve our agenda?
I make a motion to do so.
Need a second?
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Brown takes us down.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. We've got two items for discussion tonight that are allowable under the circumstances. The first is the approval of our FY21 budget at need. Again, the situation that we have here, the code of Virginia dictates that we have to present to the governing body, our board supervisors, a preliminary budget at need prior to April 1. So with that being said, in today's day and such, we needed to meet to approve such. There is a lot of questions yet to be answered as far as if our budget will maintain the status that had been assumed just a little over a month ago. Those questions are yet to be answered. I did have a conference call with the state superintendent this morning, and that question was asked, and he did say that, you know, that is, of course, an option that the governor has, and if that is the case, he believes that there's probably some other avenues that he may look at first before looking to K-12 education. So the state superintendent's recommendation to all division superintendents was to move forward with the COUT tool that's presented to our directors of finance in preparing the FY21 budget. So that is what Director of Finance, Madam Clerk, and I have done. So with that being said, we have tonight, again, our preliminary FY21 budget at need. And since we met last, there are a couple of changes. And I can go through the whole document, Madam Chair. The first item that we had was a discussion about raises. We looked at various options there, a traditional 2% pay raise, which is, right now, the recommendation from the House and the Senate for the governor's consideration. With that being said, the 2% pay raise from the state would allow the cost of the raise for the locality here to be lessened. If we have the assistance of the state, it's $150,000 per percent for local impact, $285,000 if we try to do it on our own without state support. The two options we looked at was a traditional 2% pay raise and a 2% compression raise, which actually has a cost of about 3%. Was fortunate enough to meet with our friends with the RCEA yesterday morning. They were nice enough to share information with me concerning what the RCEA members had to say as far as the 2% traditional versus the 2% compression. And 77.8% of those members that were polled, and again, that was not a poll by myself, that was a poll by the leadership of RCEA. The 77.8% of those polled did favor the 2% compression. And I think we've all talked about how that is appealing both to the employee for actually a larger dollar amount per employee across the board, but also the fact that it does have an impact with the beginning of the scale. It should make us more competitive with surrounding school divisions when it comes to attracting new staff and also with retention of our current staff. So with that being said, the recommendation that we spoke of is finalized here with the board's approval tonight, and that is a 2% compression raise. The cost would be $150,000 for percent number one, $150,000 for percent number two. And again, the actual cost on this is roughly 3%, so that final percent would have to be the $285,000 price tag. So the cost for the 2% compression is a little less than $600,000. And again, that is reoccurring funds. At this point in time, we do have $362,000 of that in the budget from the House and the Senate that they have approved. So that, again, helps us with that. On the insurance front, we did have our first insurance meeting. We have another one coming up in three weeks, and we're really pleased about that. And again, Mr. Gibson can speak to that if he'd like, but we heard some very encouraging information in that meeting. It seems, and again, Mr. Boston was in that meeting as well. But in that meeting, some very encouraging information concerning the potential for improving our insurance. And again, with that being, hopefully, no or a minimal impact on our employees. What we're looking at is a 60-40 plan. We want to get a price, if you will, on that co-insurance, so an improvement from 50-50 to a 60-40. And we've also spoken about the request, the idea of creating a 70-30 plan as well. And for those employees that are truly dedicated to that need, that they, if they so choose, wanted to buy up, if you will, to that plan, they could with that additional funds or expense being, again, the employee's choice to add. So basically, what that means is hoping that we can go to a 60-40 plan with no or little increase to our employees. And with that being said, if the employee is interested in a 70-30 plan, if that's another $48 or $62 or whatever, if the employee wanted that, they could choose to do that within picking up that cost. Went through the list there. The third item is our largest ticket item. Last year, the board approved the move of the soccer and football facility from Lebanon Middle School to Lebanon High School. So that's already on the books, on the record. This is a continuation of that with now a more detailed approach to the facility at Castlewood High School. Next, what we're looking at there is taking the football field and making that, again, a synthetic surf surface, synthetic turf surface. Slide that football field down a little bit because of room needed. It's a Title IX issue for softball, so we would need to take the softball field as it currently is located and place that between the baseball and football field where the parking lot is right now. Would have to move the concession and restroom, take those down and rebuild those. Again, smooth it down. Would have to have the press box adjusted and rebuilt there as well, grading and so forth for the softball facility. That, and in addition to a track, a practice track, just a small two-lane track around the football field for the track athletes to practice instead of their needing to go to one of our neighbors in Wise County or come to Lebanon either one. That price tag on that entire package is $1.755 million. In addition to that, we looked at the visitor locker room facility right now at Lebanon Middle School. And again, my thoughts are regardless if we move the facility eventually to Lebanon High School or not, that facility that is there at the middle school will still need to be used. We can take care of three needs at one time with that facility. I think everyone agrees it's much more efficient to do as many things as you can under one roof instead of multiple roofs. So with that being said, we could actually do a visitor and home locker room facility there and then have restrooms on the perimeter of that and have that as a second story or two-story structure where it would be level with a playing field, and that would help us with ADA compliance as well. Price tag on that is $860,000. So those two items combined is $2.615 million. Next item, a typical item that we have on here is the replacement of our buses. Every year, we put roughly 3/4 of a million miles on our buses, which we athletic trips, regular route trips, and those times that we have to use substitute buses when we have our regular route buses, you know, out of commission. With the expectancy of maybe $150,000 miles per bus, which I think is pretty liberal. With that being said, we're roughly looking at about five buses a year that we need to replace just to maintain our fleet. Well, last year, we did order five. This year, I'd like to request three, two regular route buses and one special needs bus. Price tag on those three put together, again, these things haven't changed from our workshop that was open to the public. $352,000 has changed there. Finally, on that second page, the guidance counselor issue. And I spoke to the board during that public work session that we were looking at changes in the ratios as far as the general assembly was concerned. That did come through. The ratio used to be broken down by levels. So you had 375 to 1 in elementary, 325 to 1 in middle school, and 300 to 1 in 300 to 1 in high school. That now has been washed, and it's 325 to 1 division-wide. So with that being said, we need to look at, again, the addition of one staff, one guidance counselor for Russell County. And again, in addition to the ratio issues, of course, we've had an emphasis over the last two years with the mental health counseling and so forth. And again, this item is one that we have off of our public work session. Athletic buses, this, again, has not changed, but we have 2004 models, those snuff nose buses. And with that being said, we're looking at an average of 128,000 miles on these buses. It would be nice if we could supplement this fleet. These buses are going to be coming off, you know, soon. And in order to supplement this fleet, what I would recommend is a more, I think, efficient and effective activity bus. We can get 29-passenger activity buses that, again, are much more maneuverable, much more efficient as far as fuel is concerned. And again, will meet the need of almost every sports team we have. So with that being said, we could look at this, and it would also take the pressure off using our Ford Explorers for these smaller teams as well. But we can do three activity buses there for $57,615 each. The next item, Madam Chair, again, is not changed, the Ford Explorers that I spoke of. We have a fleet of those, 2014 models that have 100,000 miles on average. We can secure these through state contract at $30,276. I would recommend that we consider adding three Explorers as we will be moving these other Explorers out as these miles continue to grow. Next item is a discussion about cafeteria. Now, this has changed as far as the dollar amount is concerned. We were looking at having discussions about making Russell County more competitive for staffing when it comes to our cafeteria operations and letting us be able to compete a little bit better with our pass-through establishments here in the town and the county. We were looking at a different dollar amount, and we've adjusted that. And of course, the reason why is part of the budget package right now is an increase in minimum wage. It's going to go to $9.50 an hour on January the 1st, given the sign by the governor. The issue with that, I guess there's two things. Number one, everybody's going to be going to $9.50, so that's why we chose, and this is an arbitrary number, but we chose 10.25 an hour, 75 cents above minimum wage for starting positions in cafeteria. In addition to that, the other issue is the fact that it is extremely problematic to do one contract for six months, half a year, half a school year, through the end of the calendar year, and turn around and start another contract for an employee on January the 1st. It's just very problematic, and historically, we haven't done that. So with that being said, my recommendation would be that we start this at 10.25 an hour. And again, we start this at the beginning of the FY21 school year. So with that increase up to 10.25, I did increase that $25,000 of impact, $35,000 of impact. And again, those funds are not funds that come out of the local budget. Those are enterprise funds that come out of cafeteria operations that are dedicated solely to our cafeteria. The next item, Madam Chair, is, again, an item that we had on there with our public work session, and that was the standalone building to house a shop for agriculture program at Lebanon High School. I shared in that meeting the fact that we have a pretty robust program with Honeaker, and Castlewood has a program in place as well with workshops and so forth for the students and equipment. We have none of that right now at Lebanon High School. So using the Copper Creek gin as a template, that's really come along nicely. Using that as a template, I think we can build that structure for roughly $45,000. And we have federal money through the Perkins Grant that we can use to purchase equipment to house inside of that. So basically, if we can build the shelf, we can take care of the building, we should have federal funds available to equip that building. Then finally, the last thing on this page, Madam Chair, is the camera system. We spoke about the issue of our fleet is aging. With that, we have cameras that are, as always, some of the buses. And with that being said, Microsoft no longer provides updates for the software that's required to read the camera information. So we need to transition to an updated system. We can take these cameras out, the hardware out, as we start to transition these buses off the routes and use those to help replace cameras that may break or something of that nature. But again, without this, we won't be able to record or read the information that we have on our buses. And that price tag is $59,000. Then on the last page, we have three items. The CEP program, the community eligibility provision. This is what allows Castlewood Elementary and Copper Creek students to receive free breakfast and lunch. With the direct certification changes, the format changes that were implemented at the beginning of the year, we've been able to locate and claim more students that fall into the direct certification requirements. I spoke to Ms. McCoy today, and actually, since we met last, we found 20 more students, okay? So we're excited about that. We're very optimistic that we may be able to provide the CEP division-wide. So we're really excited about that. The timeline for that has been extended. So Ms. McCoy will be working closely with those folks and getting that information to us so that we can make those decisions. But right now, I do have it on there as a $0 amount issue. And again, it's a wonderful opportunity for our kids. Next to last item, Madam Chair, I did have this on there as well with our public work session, and that was the School Resource Officer grant for Castlewood High School. That will terminate at the end of the fiscal year. And of course, we believe, especially in our high schools, I like to have SROs at every school, especially at our high schools. We need those SROs to be available. I have spoken to Mr. Lester in our conversation yesterday. I believe they were very open to working with us on that, what that is defined to be. They weren't willing to share that yet, but I believe as they get their numbers from the state, we'll be able to work something out. So there will be a dollar amount, I believe, when it's all said and done. But again, I don't believe it'll be a significant amount of money at this point in time. Finally, Madam Chair, the last thing I do have on here is new. And that is, again, addressing the issue of the minimum wage change. And they're looking at this going up to over $15 an hour by 2025. So there's going to be an incremental progression when it comes to this minimum wage. So in looking at that, Director of Finance, Madam Clerk, has looked at, and those cafeteria staff that I mentioned earlier are going to be affected, but also clerical staff, instructional Title I aides, substitute teachers, substitute aides, those people are going to be affected by this. And continuing with the board's efforts to better compete for employees to fill these positions, staff made the following recommendations. Again, cafeteria staff, starting rate ways to 10.25, as on the previous page. The clerical staff going from 8.55 to 10.55. Instructional title aides increase from 8.54 to 10.40. And substitute teacher increase, without a certification, a four-year bachelor's degree, 65 with 75. We'll need to increase that to 80 and 30 per day. And for the aides, that would have to go from 51 to 70 per day in order to maintain and be compliant with minimum wage laws. So with all that being shared, total price tag is $4.1 million for this budget at need. $3.3 million of it is one-time expense. $825,000 is reoccurring funds that wouldn't be needed to maintain those items. Again, $35,000 of that is within the cafeteria fund, and those are funded through the enterprise fund. So we're looking at $790,000 of reoccurring expense that we will look to our board supervisors for some assistance with. And again, Madam Chair, it's all preliminary. What the governor does, we'll have to react to that. Actually, Mr. Lester, the board supervisors, will have to react to that. They'll give us some direction, and we'll be back at this table discussing this very thing, probably sometime in June, to approve our final budget. But again, this is our preliminary budget at need, Madam Chair, and I recommend that board approves of this presentation.
I make a motion to approve it.
If I may, because we're in the state of emergency, you're only allowed right now to hold meetings electronically, which is partially what we're doing right now. I know you're all physically assembled here, but because the public is not allowed to, they're not allowed to be in here with us right now. You can only take up certain matters, which would cause irrevocable public harm if you did not act on them. So any motion that you pass, you need to make part of the motion, pursuant to 44-146.16 and 44-146.21. Pursuant to 44-146.16 and 44-146.21, that you move to approve the budget pursuant to that as failure to adopt a budget before March the 31st would, could result in irrevocable public harm. So that's the way the motion.
All right. If I may, then, may I change my recommendation? Our recommendation would be approval estimated under 44-146.16 and 44-146-21 due to the circumstances of us being under state of emergency. I make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Say it.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Brown, would you want to do the discussion? Do we need to do a discussion of the impact of the Virginia State Emergency Declaration?
Yes, we do. We'd be more than happy to breathe the board members. I try to keep you up to date with what we've done, our board weekly and so forth. By the way, this is the one thing that we don't need a attorney general's decision on. We can actually talk about this very thing because the reason we're under state of emergency is the coronavirus and its impact on the state of Virginia and Russell County as well. But we've been reactive. We had been planning for this for about three weeks prior to the announcement. And it's hard to believe, it's only been eight days. This is our eighth day, or ninth day, under this situation. So as far as the three things that we've been focusing on is continuity of instruction or continuity of learning, feeding our kids, and then, of course, cleaning our facilities. When we look at continuity of learning, our teachers came in Monday a week ago and jumped in there, and we'd already had some conversations on what it decent look like. We have different levels of activities going on. We have those things, especially at the high school level, dealing with the Chromebooks and doing Google Classroom and Google Meet and other forms of engaging things through the Chromebook and internet connections. Of course, not all of our kids have that ability, nor some of our kids may not have the connection. So in addition to that, we have some teachers that are emailing assignments, activities back and forth if they do have the internet connection. And then finally, for those that don't, we have the development of packets and activities and so forth, and that's being distributed as well. We met with the conference call. We spoke to the state superintendent now seven times, three days in a row, actually. And one of the things that we spoke about now, since the governor on Monday said we want to be closer with the remainder of the year, is pivot, was the word he used, a pivot away from instruction and keeping things currently going to more engaging activities, more thought-provoking, more innovative things. So we've given that to the principals. Yesterday, we had a Zoom meeting of all the principals through our Chromebooks. And, you know, I put down a challenge to them, the challenge of teachers, to do those innovative things. And I've already seen a lot of it. Even before we started to do this, last week, I was getting stuff brought to me that was just so impressive. Our teachers have really stepped up and done an incredible job. You know, our entire staff has just done an incredible job. But the second piece of that is feeding our kids. And Ms. McCoy and her team jumped in there, and cafeteria staff, our administrators. We have volunteers. We have some of our employees that have chosen to come back out and help. But, you know, feeding our kids, we started out last Tuesday feeding. We had 850. We delivered a breakfast and a hot lunch. We did that as a combo. We left out about 10:30 from each school. And, you know, I've got pictures, I've got cards. You know, one that really just, I kind of, to me, I think this says it all. But we had a student who drew a heart on the toe that he has at the end of his driveway for the food. So when we come and we lift the lid and take, put the food in there and so forth, there's just a heart drawn on it, no words. And that, you know, that's, that really, you know, is encouraging for me as well. I mean, let's just be honest. You know, at this level, about 85% of the stuff that we deal with seems to be negative. But, you know, when you have a positive thing, and it comes out of something negative, it's, you know, it's moving, or at least it is for me. We're looking at the possibilities for transition. You know, how bad is this going to be? We don't know. How long is it going to last? We don't know. So what are we going to do? We're making plans. What if, what if, what if? So we're looking at the next phase being possible. We reduce the number of days that we are out delivering. So maybe on Monday, we deliver Monday and Tuesdays food. Then we come back on Wednesday, and we do Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays food. Maybe we got to get to that point because of staffing. We can't get everybody out every day to do it. Another thing is, and it's a staffing issue as well, but if we can't produce a hot lunch meal for the kids, we've ordered, and we have on site already some, but we've ordered 7,000. 7,000 more, we're going to have 7,000 every week hopefully coming, prepackaged food. So we can give them a prepackaged meal that meets all of the nutritional requirements and a milk and so forth, and we're good to go, okay? So I think that's the phase. Then eventually, we may get to the point, and hopefully, we won't, but you never know, we may get to the point that we just can't serve, deliver, or do anything. And we're working with the state superintendent, and he's talking about possibility of DSS getting involved and assisting with EPT cards. And I don't know if you noticed or not, but they actually increased, maxed out everyone's EPT capabilities yesterday. So families are going to see an increase. So if you qualify to a certain level, okay, with EPT, they went ahead and maxed out whatever that dollar amount is for the number of people in your household. So in other words, if you just have two people, maybe you're allowed $350, but you qualify for 200 of that, they're going to go ahead and max that on up to 350, okay? That started yesterday, so that's going to help our families as well. When it comes to cleaning our facilities, we, you know, are proactive when it comes to that. We've got some cleaners that we already had on-site. We also ordered some additional cleaners, and I shared with our state of emergency meetings there that we had at the county administration building. We can produce about 3,000 gallons of high-end disinfectant, okay? We've got, the product that we're using right now at the schools, the product we're using the most is a liquid packet, and you squeeze it into a bottle, and you have a fill line, you fill the water up to that fill line, and that product is good, and it's already pre-portioned and very safe for our employees to use it that way. But with that being said, we've got, again, roughly 3,000 gallons worth of product in the school division that we can use. The cleaning has already started, been ongoing. We actually have some schools that are going on now with the notion from Monday, the directive from the Governor to shut down schools for the remainder of the year. We've got a couple of schools that are getting ready to start stripping summer floors, do that work. So that's encouraging in a world where some, where a virus is attacking us. Right now, we're in the best shape when it comes to cleaning. We can clean two or three rooms a day real well if you have plenty of time, you know, still, when it's all said and done, because we're looking at, you know, 90 more days and we're going to be out of school at least. Some questions that have been brought forward, you know, we feel a few things about prom and graduation. My recommendation to the Board is, you know, I would like to work with the principals on prom issue. That's going to come up a little quicker. Unless some things drastically change, I really can't see how we're going to pull that off safely. I think it's just a real concern.